Okay, we're gonna get started with the Town of Branford budget hearings for fiscal 25-26. And first I'll provide just a brief recap of the total budget requests that have been forwarded to the Finance Office, the First Elections Office, for $144,457,798. That represents an increase of $9,146,000, or a 6.8 percent increase in expenditures. The Finance Department has an estimated revenue, including fund balance, of $20,211,000. And that would leave a net-to-be-raised-from-taxation of $124,246,000. The grant list is expanded due to revaluation, and that number right now that we are using is $5,597,529,000, which represents an increase due to some additions, but mostly to revaluation, of $1,696,000,000, or 43 percent increase in the grant list. That, at this point in time, equates to a mill rate of 22.69, which is a decrease from the current mill rate, but it's just a number at this point in time. It does not final, nor does it really, really reflect what people's tax rate will be at this point in time. We will have the public hearings tonight and tomorrow night, and then Thursday we'll conclude the public hearings. The Board will then again meet on the 31st of March, and they will recommend a budget to the RTM. The RTM will go through their deliberations, and I believe they're meeting on the 14th of May for their final budget meeting, at which point in time the Board of Finance will be meeting on May 19th in order to finalize the revenues and to set the mill rate. So with that, we'll begin the public hearings. Again, this is open to the public, and people can, from the audience, can either make comments or ask questions, direct them to myself, and I appreciate that. First off is Building Inspection Enforcement, page 37 of the Budget Book.
Good evening, everyone. Happy St. Patrick's Day. This is the first time in 21 years I got to kick off the budget process. Very happy. So my budget presentation is on page 37, cutting right to it. We're asking overall a budget increase of 1.7 percent. The only thing lined on him that we're asking for an increase in is consulting services. And the reason for this increase is to cover the rate increase that our consultant is requesting this year. We are currently, he is currently at a rate of $44 per hour. He has indicated that his rate would be going to $46 per hour, so we're not asking to increase his time. I think I have the time and the amount of services that we use dialed in perfectly. It's strictly to cover his rate increase. And again, that's from $44 to $46. Considering that his rate in 2015 was $41, I think he's done Branford a pretty good service. I did check the going rate out there in other towns. Other towns are $50-plus dollars for consulting services.
Questions on this budget of $247,825, an increase of $4,172? Questions from the public on this building and inspection? Okay, thanks. Question, ma'am? Could you come up and identify yourself?
I can't hear a word anybody's saying. Could you kindly speak louder?
Sure. Yeah, I'm using the microphone. The microphone's here. We're doing the best we can. Okay, is this thing working?
No.
Is it green?
Good, got it. Tony? Can you hear me?
Yes.
So, page 37 is what Anthony Sennacola has been referring to with regards to his budget, and I will repeat what the budget request is, $247,825, an increase of $4,121,72. Tony, can you talk about the revenues?
Yes, I certainly can. Revenues to date, fees collected is $654,000. Going into, historically into the fourth quarter, we usually, historically, take in an additional $250,000 to $300,000. So I feel that comfortable in the mark of what we said that we'd be heading this year. If I could speak to just a couple of the projects in town that we have. Manors Landing Projects, we have two of the four buildings completed. It's a 147-unit project. It's going very well. 13 Summit is another 48-unit project, still under construction, going very well. We have a new subdivision lot on Cherry Hill, 11 lots there, that are just over, I believe, half sold. We have about three homes going in there currently. And we're wrapping up our Marina Village Project, which is another 15 new single-family dwellings that are going in. Currently, we have an increase of, when we take out the demolition from a set-up initiative in town, we have a net of 10 new single-family homes in town this year, so far.
Thank you. Questions from the Board? Questions from, any word from the public, the audience, RTM members? Okay, Tony, thanks.
Thank you.
Next up is Conservation and Environment, 50. Welcome, Heather.
Thank you. Happy St. Patrick's Day.
Thank you.
I'm from the Conservation and Environment Commission. Our budget... Oh, I was, not enough. Is that better?
Yes.
Thank you. We are not requesting any increase, other than a small increase in salary for our clerk. Some highlights from this budget year include our ever-popular giveaway of native plants at the Branford Festival, as well as providing environmental-themed books for each of the public schools, the three elementary schools, Walsh, and the high school. Branford is fortunate enough to own about 1,500 acres of forested open space. We have hired a consulting firm, a forestry firm, to do a pilot forest management stewardship plan. That work has been done. We're waiting for the final report, and so next year's budget, we will intend to enact some of the recommendations. The biggest thing is addressing the invasive species. Over time, if those are not addressed, then the forest will not regenerate because the cover of multiflora rose, et cetera, is preventing the seedlings from germinating and reaching the canopy. So those are the highlights from our future budget.
Thank you. Questions from the Board? Questions from RTM members or members of the public? I think you're all set. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next is Water Pollution Control Authority. Gonna use pages 65 and 66 for the detail. Welcome.
This is Gino from my operations manager.
Gino, you have to speak a little bit into the mic there.
Is it on now?
It was. It's just you have to speak a little closer.
Is that good?
Yeah.
There we go, okay.
There you go.
All right, the budget this year is, we had an increase of around the $5 million.
Yeah, and I'll try to reiterate it.
The budget this year is $5,159,306. And the big increase we had this year was the sludge hauling to the Synagro Facility in New Haven. We had a 31 percent increase on that. That was our big cost increase of our budget and contractual obligations, contracts. And we did, we had some projects. We completed a septic receiving unit, and we've been seeing a 15 percent increase of revenue from the septic haulers that come in every day, five days a week. And I have the capital projects are the same as they were last year, that I have in the budget for our capital cost.
Okay, and to point out to the public also that this is a self-funded...
Self-funded.
Self-funded, and the amount coming from the town on this from taxation is, it remains at $600,000.
$600,000, correct.
The $5,159 budget.
Right.
$600,000 is being raised from taxation.
Yes.
Thank you. Other questions from Brian, or is...
Gino.
Frank, you're gonna need to grab a mic. I think you can identify yourself.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I'm Frank Twohill, RTM First District Representative. Just a question on the income. I see an increase of, let's see, yeah, there's an increase of about $50,000 on the sewer utility fee. I believe the fee per dwelling unit is $170 now. What's the reason for the increase, please?
We did have units added to our grant list that generated the extra...
Okay, that answers it. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Okay, any other questions, RTM members, members of the public? Okay. Anything else you'd like to add?
Yeah, I just want to give you a quick highlights of what we have completed the last year, some projects. We had a new bar rack wash press completion, septic receiving unit. We completed Bradley Pump Station. We put two new pumps in there the last month and a half. We replaced the boiler, the solids process building, and two unit heaters and sludge hauling building also. And we installed a generator and transfer switch at Maple Pump Station. We're actually finishing that up next week. Couple of our projects that we're working on that are pretty much completed.
Thanks, Brian. Also, could you touch on the capital? I believe that's on page 91.
Yes.
The expanded...
Yes.
Numbering?
Yeah, the capital itself, each year I have money put in for the sewer, small pump stations, the sewer manhole repair and sewer lines. So that's still, it's been like that the last five years, $50,000 of equipment and vehicles. We have also, we have, was that page 91?
Yes.
Yeah, a total, so that's what we have in our budget. Also apparatus fund, we put money in that every year too, for back-hon trucks, pickup trucks and equipment for the facility too.
Okay, so there's the sewer line, the manhole repair, $50,000, the contribution to the reserve fund, $225,000, the $50,000 for the submersible pumps, which you mentioned.
Yes.
And the apparatus fund, $75,000.
$75,000, yes.
Yeah. So I think that's it. Okay. All right, okay. Frank, you have a question?
I do, Mr. Chairman. Okay, the other, excuse me. The other question I have, you know, which I forgot to ask the last time I was up here. So I see that you're gonna bring forward an additional, about $65,000 from your fund balance, right?
Right.
So my question is, do you have any idea how much is in your fund balance right now?
I don't know off the top of my head. Sorry, I don't know off the top of my head.
Vivian Easter Finch can help us on that.
Yeah, it's a little north of $3 million, Frank.
Thank you. Okay, thank you so much.
And here's another question here, John. Just identify yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, my question was also about the fund balance. We're putting $250,000 in, is that right?
Correct.
And so, Jim, that's added to the amount of money that's already there?
No, this is basically money that's coming out of the sewer utility fund balance.
Okay.
Not to be confused with the general fund balance.
Right. So that's money coming from the fund balance and then into the budget to...
Within the sewer utility fund, yes.
Right, okay. And how much is in the sewer utility fund now?
It's just north of $3 million.
Just north of $3 million. Okay, thank you.
Okay, other questions? If not, unless you have anything else to add. All right, thanks, gentlemen.
All right, thank you very much.
Take care. Next up is Economic Development on page 25. Welcome, Paul and Rich.
So Perry Mariska, Economic and Business Development Manager. Rich Williams here. So, just quickly, we are not looking for any increase from what we were given last year. We did last year gain some additional funds that we used in promoting and marketing the town, both through social media and other avenues, and it has worked out extremely well. Just Facebook alone, 72,000 views in the last 28 days, 600 views. We're looking now to really watch out for the reconstruction of the town center. We know that that's gonna have a big effect on the town businesses. So a lot of what we're gearing up for is to make sure that people know what you can do and where you can go while the construction is going on, and will know a little bit better later in the month when the bid is finally finalized.
Sure, thank you. So the request is for $23,550, zero increase?
Correct.
Trying to set a precedent here. Not gonna work. Questions from the Board? Questions from any RTM members or members of the public? The note takers, if there's anything else you'd like to add? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thanks for the work. Next up is Inland Wetlands, page 26. Welcome.
Thank you. Jamie Frederick, Director of Inland Wetlands. We have a 0.8 percent increase, and that's for union negotiated rate increases, basically keeping everything the same. Moved a little bit around to establish a uniform budget to codify, have the right budget for purchasing safety equipment for out in the field. Been processing applications. We had a reg revision, compliance regulations, pretty standard uniform stuff. Any questions?
Okay, the request is for $145,911, an increase of $1,142. Questions from the Board? Questions from RTM members, members of the public? I think you're all set, Jamie. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we'll take ZBA. Somebody more to appeal, Jim? Is Jamie covering? Jamie covering both?
No, I'm Jamie Cosgrove.
No, I know that, but there's, I was skipping him to go on the ZBA.
No, plenty of them.
Okay, well, we look at Planning and Zoning, page 23. Request is for $456,476, increase of $56,028.
Apologize, Joe, I was trying to find more microphones. So the major change that you'll see in the budget is an additional $50,000 in consulting services. The other changes are the contractual help or staff on regular wages and salaries, and we do have a seasonal part-time position, which was a 2.25 percent increase for that. Let me just explain the $50,000 in the consulting. We are currently in a period of transition. We engage a planning consulting firm, Tyke. They brought on board to assist us for the remainder of this fiscal year. I expect we may need to carry their services on through at least a portion of next year. So I thought it was prudent to carry some dollars in the budget for next fiscal year. I will just inform the Board that we did make an offer for Director of Planning, which was accepted. That individual is expected to start on April 14th, and at that point, we'll work to fully staff the department. So things may change with the, but at this point in time, when we're developing the budget, as I said, we thought it was prudent to carry additional consulting dollars for those purposes.
Okay, thank you. Questions from the Board on this budget? Questions from RTM members, members of the public? We need you to come up, unfortunately, they got a mic in.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, Nancy McCormick, RTM 6. So with the hiring of this new position, that will offset consulting fees perhaps in the future? Is that the purpose of the consulting?
Yeah, so the consulting firm is essentially acting as our planning staff.
Right.
And planning and zoning staff, really. So as that department becomes fully staffed again, yes, the need for consulting dollars should taper off accordingly. Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, thank you. Next is Zoning Board of Appeals, ZBA. Covering that one too, Jamie?
Sure.
Page 24.
Yep, so it's just a 2.25 percent for the Board Clerk. All other items are, remain flat year over year.
The request is for $11,549, increase of $113. Questions from the Board? RTM members, general public? Okay, thanks, thank you. Next, we're gonna move on to Elderly Services on page 44.
Good evening. I'm Dale Zone Director of Parks Recreation and Leader Services, and I have chaired on the Board of Recreation, Falcon Scola with me.
Welcome and congratulations.
Thank you very much. First time presenting the Elderly Services budget. You can see that we decreased it by 19.8 percent. I just moved a couple of things around to make the land items correct and make sure things are coming out right, right land items.
Was that a decrease in headcount for the regular wages?
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah, so you wanna address that?
Sure, I'll address that as well. So as the Board may be aware, we're with the retirement of two longtime-serving employees, we thought this was a good opportunity to kind of reevaluate how the programs and services and the departments were operating, and we thought it was the best, and we tried it for several months before initially, finally committing, but to really integrate the two departments. For this budget year, we thought it was cleaner just to keep the two separate budgets, because we are still going through that transition. Dale is appointed Director. She is now evaluating the departments and how we deliver the services and programs, and will probably be making some adjustments with that. Combining the two led to the decrease of the Director, one Director position, which, so that's what led to the significant decrease in this year's salary and wages for the elderly service, our senior center department. We will then, however, I did have a conversation with Finance. I asked them to put some numbers, some dollars into contingency. I know later tonight you'll hear contingency presentation from Finance Director Jim Finch, because we do have some areas that we want to look to expand, primarily in the food services and how we provide and what we do provide to our community, in particular the senior community, but, so we want to be able, as we assess and transition, to perhaps come back to the Board to fund some of those programs that we may see fit.
Thank you. Dale, anything else?
No, do you want to talk about the capital?
Sure, so this, the operating request is for $395,397, and a decrease of $97,543. Capital is on, what page is that on?
In a different section of the book, right?
Yeah, the other 42.
So this is basically a sinking fund for the vehicles that the department has, which are buses and three medical transport. So each year, $35,000 goes into that sinking fund, so that when we need a new vehicle, we can use these funds for that vehicle.
Okay, questions on the capital? Okay. Questions from the public on any of this? Elderly Services? First, gonna go with Nancy back here, right? Oh, Tracy, sorry. Got to clear my glasses here.
I have to sit in the back so I can have a table. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dale, can you explain, and maybe the First Election can, I don't understand the salary lines now in this department? You're being compensated for the work that you're doing to help to run this, but what are the other salaries that are being paid out of this, and does that overlap with preparation?
So, if you want me to add? So all the positions that were funded through, historically through this department, which in the current budget, are being funded in the requested budget, except for the Director position, the Canute Brook, or Senior Center Director position, is zeroed out. So that's the Assistant Director, the Transportation Coordinator, the Program Coordinator, Admin Program Coordinator, they just, last year changed title, and Case Worker position. So those are the full-time positions that are still funded at their current contractual rate.
And if you look at page 87, Tracy in back, there's a detail of the line items for salaries on page 87, in the back of the book. Okay, other questions, Frank?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This isn't really a question, but it's a comment. I would just like to say that, you know, I just heard some great ideas from our first electman, Jamie Cosgrove, about the food here and the Senior Center. I mean, it's true that for years, right, our seniors have been going to Guilford because the Guilford Senior Center has a chef. And I think back here in Branford, when the Director was Mr. Brady, we used to have, you know, a hot lunch program served every day, right, at the Canoe Brook. And, I mean, the elderly used to, you know, pack that whole entire big room with the hot lunch program. And here, right, you know, at the Joe Trapasso, which came out beautifully, you know, there's a great kitchen over there, which I've been in. So, you know, so I think it's a great idea to beef up the food and, you know, if there's any other activities that could also be given to our seniors, that would be great. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you.
Lisa Waterman, RTM District 1. Maybe you could, so by removing or eliminating the position for the Director of the senior activities, how will that, again, impact the programs, impact the philosophy of the department going forward? I mean, you're taking two full-time positions and making them one. So will that, how will that negatively, will that negatively impact the senior programs?
I don't think it's going to negatively impact it at all. Actually, we've increased programming in the last month and a half, opened up more avenues for the seniors to come, and we're continuing to look forward to continue to do that. The programmers and the Assistant Director currently in that position, they have begun, you know, opening up more avenues and meeting with the seniors to ask them what they want for programming. Just recently, we started like opening up wait lists that happened to be extensive. So we've been able to do that. They're starting movies on Fridays, and they've increased that from like 20 people to 60 people just by hanging this today and opening up like the walls and the lunch program. And so, we're expanding every day and trying to think outside the box to get people in, so. And the pool room has increased too with several people. So, I don't think there's a negative impact on it at all.
Okay, thank you. Other questions or comments? Take John and then Peter Black, Captain.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. John Harwell, John Harwell, District 1. It's actually, just a comment about, comment about the agenda for the evening. And some of us are now working directly from the electronic, electronic, rather than from the paper book, paper book. Flipping back and forth, capital and the regular budget is a little bit cumbersome, especially when in the agenda, it doesn't say, oh, by the way, there's a capital thing on page X that you need to go to. So, I would just ask that going forward, there'd be more of an annotation of where we are because we all like to move away from paper. And so, that would make it a lot easier. And I just want to say, Dale, congratulations on your appointment. I think that this is the best-run department in the town, has been forever. And I saw the bench outside with Alex on it. I said, that's perfect.
Thank you. Peter, come up to the mic, thanks.
Thank you. Pete Black, RTM 3rd District. I just want to, just a comment, is that this is the direction that we, many of us, myself, were hoping we'd move toward when we built this addition, rather than a standalone Senior Center. I can say over the past few years, I've been really happy to see the utilization of this building coming here. There's, you know, seniors here in the evening, and the old Senior Center was closed, and there's young people, there are people of all ages using it at all times. So, great job to you and your staff, thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to Recreation Department, and that's on page 46.
So we're looking to increase, 3.4 increase to the budget, overall budget, which is $44,879. The biggest increase you'll see is in the utility, water, gas, and electric of $25,000. $15,000 of that is coming from non-tax dollars, which is coming from the Foot Trust. We just got word last week that we did get the Foot Trust and got the first payment. And the second will be coming in July. So, for tax dollars, we're increasing that by $10,000. And then there's an increase in the Form Holding Allowance, which is under the union contract. So it's an increase of 3.4%.
Okay, so it's a total request of $1,373,232, an increase of $44,879. Questions on the board?
Yes, Dale? Oh, is this on?
It's not, yeah, I think you need to use this.
Thank you. Dale, what was the full amount of the disbursement from the trust this year?
So, $375,000. $125 is operating, to operate and do the grounds at foot, and the $250,000 is for improvements in the playground down there.
Historically, you've done a great job in terms of identifying other opportunities in terms of grants. Do you have any plans for making such applications this year, and in what areas?
I have not looked in that yet. I know that we always are looking for dollars to try to increase some of our camp offerings, especially for childcare. We lost the Department of Ed dollars last year, the STE grant. So we're looking to find ways to, you know, kind of offset costs for parents that need to use our facilities and our camps for, you know, childcare.
Okay, is that a good dinner?
Thank you, yep.
Okay, thanks, Dale. Frank, you have a question?
I do, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I was looking at the overtime. You're asking for an increase of 26%, about $8,000. I mean, what's the reason for that? You think you're going to, you know, you'll be short?
Yeah. So a lot of it has to do with just increasing stuff that's happening in the parks. Like we maintain the bathrooms at foot, maintain the bathrooms in Stony Creek, maintain the bathrooms here, so there's a lot of wear and tear on this building. So they come in on off-hours to clean on the weekends.
Okay, that's right, thank you so much.
And Parker Park as well.
Yeah. I know, there's a lot on your plate.
Okay, anything else on the Recreation operated? Now we'll move to page 76 of the other, of the capital.
75, or 77?
Sure. I'm showing 76, but we're starting with...
You're looking at the detail, not the back?
Detail, okay.
Court, I'm looking at the book.
Dale, it's in the book.
Okay, and it's Court Renovation Program of $20,000.
Yeah, so basically, this has always been in the budget. We kept it all the same thing. It's just to keep, you know, the repairs and upkeep to the courts continuing to go along like we have been doing. So when we have, you know, a crack, we can fix it. It also entails like pickleball courts, basketball courts. So it's any renovations to any type of those, the bocce courts that we just put in at Hammerfield.
And then you have fencing?
Yep, same thing with fencing. We're keeping that the same at $20,000, I believe.
$20,000 for fencing, yes, and then you have...
Same thing for tree pruning, same thing for field renovation programs. That's kind of all staying the same.
Okay, I see a field renovation for $20,000. I'm just going sequentially through the book here. And then I have another $25,000 for a foot park clay tennis court reconditioning program?
Yep, and that's all part of that grant that we just spoke about.
Yeah. And then foot park playground replacement of...
Again, that's part of the Foot Trust that they gave us. They gave us $25,000 this year. We have $50,000 left from last year's project that we can roll into that. So, those are all non-tax dollars. We would be asking for $25,000 to complete that project down there and replace the structure, the wooden structure at foot.
Right.
But the rest of that is non-tax dollars.
Okay. And then lawn and tractor equipment for $25,000?
Yeah, that's an additional request this year. Yep, to purchase a new groomer. The one that we have is, we had one that was taken out of service and sent to auction. This provides us to continue to keep the, you know, fields smooth so we don't have to do as much maintenance on them, enhancing safety and weed reduction. And also, we're looking to purchase a zerrill turned on to replace an older piece of equipment.
And then you have tree removal, as Paul mentioned, $20,000?
Yep, it's the same request as last year, to continue to prune trees in the parks.
That you contract that off?
Yes, and we work with Gary from Public Works as well.
And then, looks like a, this year vehicle, yes?
Yep.
You have quite a lot of these requests, you know?
I know, thank you.
Pretty easy items.
Yeah, right? So the vehicle replacement, you know, kind of speaks for itself. We have a 23-year-old standard shift truck down at Parker Park that has 144,000 miles on it. I think it might even be older than 23 years old. I think I, I think I, yeah, 28. I think I drove it when I was a part-timer. So, it's, you know, in need of being taken out of service so that we can, you know, maybe complete our fleet. So that's the, that's the request for that.
Yep, that, $50,000. And then you have Veterans Park, parking lot paving.
I think that's pushed out.
Oh, I see, yeah, that's 27.
Yeah, that's pushed out, yeah. Well, because, you know, we have that whole study that was done, and there's been work that's being done up there. So that's pushed out to, you know, other years.
That's...
I think that's...
I think that's the recap on the, on capital items for the Rec Department. Questions from the board on the capital requests? Questions from the public? I'll take John and then Peter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick question, because I heard you mention the trees. And in Foot Park, there are a couple of trees, because I go there all the time, that were planted and then they died. And I mentioned it to the park people there. And they said, no, that belongs to somebody else. So I'm just wondering, when that happens, where do we get the trees to plant in places like that? This is around the Veterans Venture. And if they die, which sometimes they do, we know that, that stuff. The question then is, who's responsible for replacing them? And what's the process there?
I'll have to do a little research on what trees you're actually speaking about and when they went in, but we do work with Gary and the tree warden.
Dale, let's see, ones at Eversource had the plaque because of ones they took elsewhere. It's, yeah, so as you do your research, it's kind of all in between the cracks. We'd love to see the cracks get well done.
Okay, I will look into that.
Yeah.
Okay, Peter and then this, this one, have they here?
Alex will appreciate this comment, and I won't put you on the spot, but we should find out what the Recreation Department fund balance is and whether it's grown or shrunk over the last year. As longtime members of the board know, we've traditionally tapped that for many of the capital expenses for the Rec Department, like vehicles in particular. And again, you know, Jim, on the budget, you know, if the Foot Trust were, we've got the other line there. I would guess that the Foot Trust would be in the other line rather than the general fund. No? Okay, all right, but, you know...
Thanks, thanks for commenting.
I can answer the one-down question.
Oh, good.
Thank you, Catherine. So the fund balance as of June 30th, that's on, or that is $435,000?
$400,000.
And $35,000.
Okay, and a year prior, you know what it was?
Now you're, now you're really like testing me.
We can get that information for you.
Yeah.
Again, I'd just remind the public that the RTM votes on expenditures. That's their authority, and the Board of Finance has got purview over fund balances, all of them, as well as the revenues and also the tax pay. Ma'am, you had a question? Comment?
Hi. Sorry.
Grand entrance.
My name's Kathleen O'Neil-Liers, and I've never been to this meeting before, so forgive my question, it may not be appropriate. But, in terms of recreation, I was thinking about Ecology Park, and that wasn't mentioned. I know Foot Park and other parks were mentioned in town. And Ecology Park is blocked off so people can't access it. And again, I don't know if this is the appropriate place to talk about it, but...
Sure, sure. Maybe the first slot, you can shed some light on that?
Blocked off, you mean, for driving up to the top, yeah?
Driving up to the top and parking, if you wanted to walk through the...
You can walk through, you can, you can, there's a trail that will take you up there. You can walk up there. The access, there was just an ongoing issue with, you know, people traveling up there, creating damage with the cars. It's a lot of rutting, so that's when they ended up locking the gate. But you can park on the exterior, walk up to the park.
So what about handicap people?
So, yes, that, there was initially some two spots that were up there. And, but again, the condition of it and the rutting was leading to an unsafe situation. So I know between both the Rec Department and Public Works have been kind of struggling with, not struggling, but looking at different ways to try to address that and to keep that road so it doesn't continue to rut, primarily to, you know, people traveling up there, spinning the tires, doing, you know...
So because of misuse of the area, it's actually closed to the public because people misuse it?
Well, it's not close to the public. Public does go up there, but those spots, the park, the parking spots up to the top, yes, they've been closed for a while.
And you may revisit that?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions regarding Recreation or Oversight? Okay, I think we're all set, thank you. Next is Parks and Open Space. Page 61 is the detail. Welcome, Rich.
Thank you. Richard Shanahan, Chair of Parks and Open Space. Basically, it should be a very simple request. I initially, I'm a little confused here. I submitted the same budget as we did last year with no changes. But then, when I got this to see me, I discovered some different numbers. So basically, for purchases, other supplies, equipment, I looked at the same, $24,3500. And I see that's now $35,000. And then I requested $750 for equipment, and that's down to $500. And for capital, and that was $3500, and that's up to $4331. So, I'm not sure what these numbers are.
Well, we could probably help you out there, Richard. Mr. Rich, you have some insight?
Actually, I can tell you on the capital stuff, that we were talking about on Friday, is that, basically, Rich was away, I was working on some things. And so basically, we're trying to catch up and go through some of this. But we will have some adjustments. We're going to be making an adjustment on the capital side. Because we don't have that Hilltop project that we talked about. So we got out of that. We did increase your revenue, and so we did increase some line items for that. Obviously, we could take those numbers down. I think the number they will probably be looking at on the capital side will be like $20,000 for Hilltop.
Correct.
So that'll be a project that'll be added to the capital plan. The funding source will be other, the drive will be taxing for it because the Open Space Fund, you know, is generating enough through its income to cover that. So, so that'll be some of the amendments that I'll be proposing to the Board of Finance. of the amendments that I'll be proposing to the Board of Finance.
Okay, does that help you out, Rich?
I, I guess so.
Okay, how's everything else going with the open space?
It's going great, yeah. Pretty well caught up on projects, and everything stands well.
Good, well, thanks, thanks for the good work. Questions from the board on this request for $148,300, which again, is showing a transfer in, I assume that's the general fund contribution, Jim, to $26,800?
It is.
So, it's really no increase in taxation on this fund, it's just other financing.